All right, I'd like to call a regular council meeting for November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilperson Picarella. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'll take role. Councilperson Ginever? Councilperson Becker?
I'm here.
Councilperson Bradley?
Here.
Councilperson Kimfer?
Here.
Councilperson Schomburg is absent. Councilperson Fisher is absent. Councilperson Massa? Councilperson Picarella? Perfect. All right. If everybody's had time to look at the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Perfect. I have a motion in second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam clerk, is the agenda posted, dated, and signed? Perfect. Thank you very much. Everybody have a chance to look at those previous minutes from last month. I briefed through them. I thought everything looked fine.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the October twenty-fifth meeting.
All right, I have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Public comment, we have none. Uh, we're at check registry, bills, financial report, sales, tax report. Um, one thing on that, Mr. Becker, you sent an email today on the, uh, use tax. Um, our use tax been averaging roughly nine thousand a month, a little give or take some. Uh, some, some places don't pay the taxes until quarterly. So we haven't, we haven't had the use tax in place long enough to determine exactly where we're gonna be at on that. Um, it'll continue to grow hopefully.
Yeah.
And that money, just to reassure people, has been earmarked for sidewalks, alleys, and roads. And, uh, that's still the plan. So we're just making sure that's where we're at and going from there. Do you have anything to add else on that?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we'd sent out whatever notices we were, uh, needing to send out since we, we are required to notify the department for revenue if we make changes to our municipal borders. I just wanted to make sure we weren't supposed to send something out having passed this use tax, but I think DOR is probably taking care of that.
Thank you for that, keeping up on that, so. All right.
Um, if nobody has anything further, I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the check register and bills and the sales tax reports.
All right, I have a motion in second. Any discussion on those? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Uh, the committee reports, uh, they're in your packet. Give you a moment to look at them real quick. I think for the audience, we had committee packets printed out there for you. Yep, you're welcome.
Um, one thing on the topic of water, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Uh, Jason, you and I were talking about this the other day. Can we make, you said that, uh, that AT&amp;T contractor that somehow managed to cut the water mains in Festus and Hillsborough, they don't have anything to do over here, is that correct? Not till your knowledge, okay. Okay, well, you probably would've heard about it if they were still working.
All right. I've, I've got something else too.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, for the fire department, were they doing fire practices at the, at admin building, the old PPG admin building? They did, okay. Yeah, it was a couple of days and they were there a couple of hours with two trucks and about five or six people, I think.
Yeah, I knew they were supposed to do a, a run-through on that and I think, uh, the owner was happy to let it through. Yeah, he was.
Okay.
Yeah, it works out, he's, works out good for us.
I just didn't know, so I just wanna make sure that that's what it was. Okay, thanks.
Um, the street departments, your update's in there. Leaf removal's going well, kinda depends on the weather, but other than that, it's going, going nice, moving right along. So, police department, fire department, as always, doing fantastic, so. Uh, we'll move on to council liaison reports if you guys don't have anything else. All righty. Mr. Fisher's gone. You have anything for Mr. Fisher or Ms. Schomburg? Okay. Sewage commission, Mr. Picarella? Okay. Planting and zoning, Mr. Becker?
Um, I believe there's at least one item for planting and zoning for the month of December's meeting.
Okay.
That will be on December eighth at, uh, six thirty. That's it.
Got it. Uh, Mr. Ginever, zoning appeals?
I have not been made aware of any meetings.
All right, lady commissioner, Mr. Kimfer? All righty. Uh, public response, uh, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on anything? Uh, I had one thing regarding the trash you asked last month about the trash thing. Um, we did some numbers, uh, we had a truck breakdown and things on that, but, uh, we looked at some numbers on average. When we can make it down to, uh, that waste, it's, you save about two hundred dollars per dumping fee. Um, the street guys are gonna make every effort they can to do that. Um, it is down the road a little ways, but they are continuing to do that, so that's the savings that we have. That's, two hundred dollars a dump is great, um, it is a gross fee though, so we still gotta pull fuel out of that and stuff, but it's a savings of, you know. That's where we're at. Uh-huh. Old business, we have none. New business, uh, Mr. McKinney, you have the floor.
If I could ask the minutes reflect, usually in the past, I've stepped out for this discussion since I have a conflict. I'm just gonna sit here and not participate in the discussion or the vote, if that's okay with everybody. Well, that way I, otherwise I don't know what was said either.
You're fine. Yeah, he's still here, he's gonna stay here and then just abstain, that's, that's absolutely.
Everyone, good evening. David McKinney with Custom Insurance Services, just going to go over, um, the renewal documents for the, uh, January first renewal for the partially self-funded health plan. Um, Jason handed you out, um, a packet that I know looks like an eye exam and there's a lot of information on there, so we weren't trying to just make it super tiny, but what we're gonna focus on is the second column from the left, which is the renewal with ISU. Um, these are renewal rates that are firm through eleven twenty-nine, um, meaning that as long as we get approval and notice to Jason to notify them that the city's intent is to accept the renewal, we're in good shape with that. Um, boiling down to the total annual fixed cost increase, we have a renewal, uh, projected at two point five nine percent increase in a fixed cost, which in this day and age, if I could deliver renewals in the single digits to a whole lot of people, I would not be working nearly as hard as I am right now. So I see that as an incredible positive. There were a few things that went through with that. Um, number one, last year, we went from having two lasered individuals to one lasered individual going forward. Um, we did a lot of external stop-loss marketing. If you look at the second page, as we do every year, the stop-loss, um, insurance, we market out to multiple different folks. So ISU quoted is the incumbent and that is who are, uh, recommending as the best renewal. Rockport was quoted, Symmetra was quoted, Accuris was quoted but uncompetitive, Skyward was quoted but uncompetitive. The three at the bottom just declined to quote because when the initial numbers came in, they were already higher than the existing premium, so they just said, "We're not going to move forward 'cause we don't think we were gonna do well from there." Um, the employees, and we look at this every year, the employees continue to have a really, really excellent utilization of the in-network facilities that are out there from HealthLink. And the reason that's important, it's important to the employees because it helps to lower their out-of-pocket expense, but it is also vitally important to the city because it helps to make sure that they are maximizing the discounts from the portions of the claims that they are responsible for using. So when we're looking at, you know, partially self-funded renewals, we try to key in on are there certain things that we could push or encourage the employees to do better? And in this instance, with the city's utilization being in the high ninety percent in-network, there's really nothing more that you could ask of them from that perspective, and that is reflected, um, in the two point five nine percent, um, renewal. So, um, as we're looking through that, really where we stand would be, A, if there are questions that would be generic in nature, we could always go through those in this format. As I've mentioned to everyone, you know, every year, and I know how exciting it is to look at stop-loss contracts and what have you, but if there's ever anyone that wants to set some time to dive into the fifty-eight pages of demographic reports and utilization numbers that we have, I'm always willing to do that, just to schedule that, not in an open format such as this. But if there's any questions, we can field them now, or if not, we would just be looking for a motion to approve and move forward.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? For Mr. McKinney on the insurance, two point seven one percent increase sounds amazing. Uh, and the, the girls and Mr. Eisenbachs do a great job of telling our workers, "Hey, do this, do this to save." I mean, it's not, it's not just one.
All year, so I mean, we have conversations at six.
It sounds good, so I like it. Uh, I, I need a motion. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed or? Mr. Becker abstains. All right, motion carries.
Guys, we appreciate you. It's always a pleasure. Hope that you guys have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, you as well. All right, next up on new business, we have Ms. Malone for our audit presentation. Should be on the screens above me and back there.
All are lucky, insurance and audit in the same night.
Right? It's like we, we really, we did good on that.
I'm like, I don't, you know, I'm glutton for punishment here. I don't know if we could get much more boring than this. Uh, so this, Barb, this is what, our ninth or tenth year with the city? I've been here a decade. I know we've been here, probably since I've been at the farm, so we might even be pushing twelve. Um, twelve years for the audit, so I'm just gonna dive right in. All right, so, okay, my slide came out with good-sized font. I was like, it looked good to me when I looked and I was like, oh crap, I forgot you guys had gotten all of this, uh, to project it. So, just some key highlights for, uh, for the audit for two thousand and twenty-two. So this is gonna be sort of a history lesson, looking back to the end of March of two thousand and twenty-two, so we're, you know, obviously a few months past, but, um, the city received an unmodified audit opinion on the governmental activities, each major governmental fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information. So that's good, obviously. Um, there was no material misstatements that we found. We worked with Barb to do any other minor adjustments that would've been needed. And then, as in the past, that occurred last year, there was a modified audit opinion on business type in the proprietary fund, that's on water and sewer. We'll talk about that actually in a couple more slides. We'll go over the reason for that. It's mostly an accounting rule problem. It's not really, um, anything that's done on the process of the city at all. For a couple of highlights, the governmental activities, so that's anything but water and sewer. The cash remained relatively unchanged over from twenty-one to twenty-two. The restricted cash decreased to three hundred and ten thousand. That's gonna be mostly due to the completion of the new street shed and the project that was related to the bond issuance, to the COP issuance that you guys did last year. Additionally, the net pension liability went down by two million. So I have another slide that's gonna focus on that a little later in the presentation, but mostly that's due to changes in investments. Market was pretty good up until recently, and now we're like, oh crap, you know. Um, additionally, in the governmental activities themselves, you had a net position increase of a hundred and seventy-four thousand. So overall, we had net income. We went up in what, uh, our assets over liabilities were. Additionally, on top of that, long-term debt decreased by a hundred and twenty-six thousand, and that's just due to making your routine scheduled debt payments, um, as required. So... This next slide focuses mostly on the changes in water and sewer. So water and sewer did have a cash decrease, the unrestricted cash did decrease by two hundred and fifty thousand. The restricted cash went down by about a million. That was, again, related to the completion of the well and the sewer projects that were, um, part of that in, uh, that issuance that was done last year. So we had decrease in the street shed, decrease here, 'cause it's all kinda tied together in the same, um, debt repayment. The net pension liability went down here as well by nine hundred and ninety thousand, and the long-term debt decreased just due to, um, the scheduled debt service payments. Now, water and sewer did have a loss for the year of two hundred and eighty-two thousand. And then this last part that I wanted to highlight, that the city received four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars from, um, what has been known as the ARPA funds. Now, that's not really its real name, so I did put its real name up there. The Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. No wonder they call it ARPA, that seems so much shorter than trying to blur about all of that. Um, auditors kinda refer to that as the SLFRF. Um, there's a couple of other names that are out there, but the city did receive its first portion of that in two thousand and twenty-two, so you should've gotten your second deposit already, um, as well. I do have the audit report in front of me. I can pull that page really quick to see if there's any numbers on here that stand out. I would say, if it wasn't, I mean, our actual income from operations was about eighty-nine thousand to the positive. A lot of that's just interest. Um, so if we wanna include the interest expense on the debt, that's where really we get into that loss. The, just the operating revenues versus operating expenses, you, there wasn't a, a net income. But it, it was still, the, the remaining cash in the bank account still had to subsidize the interest payments. And that could just be, maybe rates didn't cover, there was more routine maintenance that was done, things that weren't capital items. Um, I know the sewer plant's been quite expensive recently, um... Okay, so the next couple of slides are just gonna be some trends that, uh, we've noted over the last five years. I feel like now that we've done this for ten years, we could probably put a whole ten-year picture on so we could get, you know, add, add a little bit more on to it. But, um, sales tax is up and it's the highest it's been in the last, um, five years now. In two thousand and twenty-one, you can tell there's a huge jump and it increased again in two thousand and twenty-two. A lot of that is related to the fact that Festus passed the public safety tax, which you guys get part of from Walmart, so it kind of felt, kind of was nice, like, hey, we're gonna get all this extra money. Um, and then this number in the future years will also include your new use tax too. So you should see an ongoing increase as long as folks keep shopping, pretty much. Um, property tax did go down a little bit. Um, a lot of what your property tax income is though is due to timing of payment. You could tell between twenty and twenty-one, there was a pretty big increase. And I think, Shelley, we talked about this previously, you had like a delinquent payer that kinda finally caught themselves up in twenty-one, so, uh, we were able to more normalize in two thousand and twenty-two on what you should expect to see going forward. Yeah, it, yeah, yeah. And that's kind of done just more so, so that it doesn't show all of the, the points to be, you know, real, real, real small. Okay. So expenses this year were up. Um, I think across the board, we did have some, um, premium pay that was done from ARPA. Um, there were some items that were purchased that maybe didn't meet the threshold for capitalization. Um, they weren't, weren't big enough to have to depreciate, but they were bigger than what you would normally have purchased. Um, so our, and again, like Mr. Becker pointed out, the graph doesn't quite start at the bottom 'cause we do want you to see a little more clearly, like, hey, here's a baseline, and then here's where we are above that. Um, so we did have an increase of about maybe two hundred and fifty thousand in total expenses, but this governmental activity section, we were still, we still had an increase in net position, so there still was a net income there.
Okay. I mean, that's about five hundred, right? Am I reading that?
Five, yeah, five hundred.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, so this is your water and sewer charges for service. So as you can see, based on the operations, which you had just had that question, the, um, we did have an increase in operating expenses, which I think primarily a lot is the sewer department, um, the sewer treatment expense. But in this case, you know, we're, we're closing the gap on having that net, net, net operating income, but you guys still did have a positive net operating income in water and sewer. All right, this is just a generic picture on the outstanding debt that you, the city has, and as the payments are made, the COPs will continue to decrease. Up through nineteen and twenty, there was, uh, some notes payable, which was for a fire truck. That got paid off and wrapped into the COP issuance that you see right now. So that is gonna continue to be paid according to the normal debt service schedule. This is water and sewer. So, um, two thousand and twenty, we had paid down the, uh, water plant, and then in two thousand and twenty-one, we had that new issuance, and now it'll start going back down on this graph as well. All right. This is the interesting slide that I was like, I don't really like how it looks, but I couldn't, not, I'm definitely not the PowerPoint expert, but for the first time in a very long time, at, uh, three thirty-one twenty-two, you guys had a net pension asset, meaning in the lager's pension, you officially, uh, had more assets than liabilities, so it was overfunded. Now, I don't, I don't think that's the same picture today, 'cause all of it's based on investments, and so investments are really high. Almost every city that we do across the board had a net pension asset last year. I think there's gonna be a huge swing back to normal, so it's probably gonna go back to being underfunded as long as you guys stay at eighty percent or more. There's, I mean, it, you're by statute required to pay some, you know, whatever they assign you, based on whatever the actuaries decide. As long as you make that payment, these numbers are gonna continue to fluctuate. Um, there's not anything different that you guys need to do. This is, uh, what I was gonna say we were gonna circle back to, why the water and sewer has a, a modified opinion. This was similar, we had it last year. Uh, we haven't really made the choice to correct it. I actually advised Barb not to do it, um, just 'cause it's a cost-benefit analysis, it's not gonna weigh out. But there is Gatsby Statement eighty-three, the asset retirement obligation. It states that the city has to, quote, "Record an estimated liability associated with any future closure of the sewage treatment plant," basically. I don't think you guys would plan on closing the sewage treatment plant. Um, it, it, the statement basically says, hey, if we know we're gonna owe five hundred thousand dollars down the road, I'm guessing, total estimate, you have to expense that over the life of the plant. Well, it doesn't really work out for you guys because it's a, it's a moving picture. Um, so I, the cost of having to even figure out where to even start for that is just not feasible for a city of your size. So it's like saying, hey, you know what, we really shouldn't do that because there's not really a benefit to going out and getting all of these estimates. So that is, uh, our only finding, the only reason that we had to modify on anything was just non-compliance with this statement. So that is the end of my story. Did anybody have any questions?
I don't have any. Yes, Barb.
So the debt payments that we're making on them, all together on those two is about twenty-five thousand a month, which is going to start to not have to be paid as soon as.
And it stays in the water fund?
Yeah, yeah. You're real close to end of life, so that, uh, that high amount of interest, I mean, you probably aren't paying a ton of interest on those two since you're close to their end of life or maturity, but, um, the net cash flow will definitely change 'cause you won't have to be making those two debt payments once they're pay off.
Thank you for that. Right. Any questions?
I know, it's riveting stuff, but if, um,
I mean, I have.
if you guys take a peek at your audit reports later and you're like, oh.
I have some questions about the, um, the reason why we need to state that liability for the pension because we pay what we're told to by lagers. And I know, and I don't wanna get into it again, but like, it's, the liability for that is not really on our books. Like, we pay into a state-managed system.
Yep.
Not that I wanna contemplate the possibility of this, but if that state-managed system goes belly up, I'm not sure that we're obligated to pay out those funds to retirees. The city is not legally, technically obligated to do that because we're paying somebody else to have that liability on their books. Why we have to show that on our books at all is a total mystery to me.
I've been on a soapbox so high, I was afraid I'm gonna fall off, going on and on and on about why it, if, the only way that this would ever come to fruition, that the city would owe anything, would be basically like if you ceased to exist and as of that date, you had to make sure all of your funding was in for any retiree that would've invested at that time. Otherwise, if you exist in perpetuity, a number in perpetuity is basically a nothing. You don't ever owe anything.
And I know why they made the rule the way they did. It's because of Illinois and states like Illinois where, that have not properly funded their pension system, so I'm sorry. Real estate's cheap over here, you should move.
Yeah. I would love to, but my husband, I gotta wait for him to retire from, out of the teacher pension system, so.
But like, I think, I think they just made that accounting rule to draw attention to the fact that this could happen, so.
I, I completely agree. I do not agree with it. I liked the way that the old presentation was, and it, now to carry, like, say for instance, this year, now that the market is down.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is true, but I would anticipate in fiscal twenty-three, we're gonna have a massive swing the other way and we're gonna go back to having a net pension liability. And because of how the change in all of that works, you're most likely gonna end up with a decrease in net position next year, and it's basically all on paper. It wasn't because we overspent or didn't budget properly or anything along those lines. It's just, hey, our, our investments that we're doing really, really good now that we're nearing recession are gonna be worse, like, and it's all on paper. And they're gonna come back and they're gonna tell you. and it's all on paper. And they're gonna come back and they're gonna tell you, hey, this is your funding percent, and you're gonna pay that, because that's what state statute says. And there's not really anything you can do to change the number itself.
Yeah, we don't get to pick how much we pay into loggers. It's like our teacher, yeah, it's the same thing as that, so.
That's what I mean. It, it just depends on ultimately, I mean, that's a conversation.
For an entity like the city that carries as much long-term debt as we do, I don't think that makes sense.
Those debts would still be in the good balance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We also not, I mean, it would, it would also not show the assets either, so.
Yeah. I, I guess ultimately, that would be a choice that just needs to be made, based on who are the users of your financial statements, and what information in the audit report do they find valuable?
I, I would have to see something real compelling to make me wanna switch the accounting basis for the city, let me put it that way.
How it is, but I don't know. I have to research that a lot. All right. Well, if we don't have any further questions, are you done, Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Uh, if nobody has anything else, I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, fiscal year ending twenty twenty-two audit.
All right. I have a motion and a second. I think we've discussed it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Ordinances and resolutions. All right. Uh, we have ordinance eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance updating the procedure for filing for elective offices per House Bill two seventy-one.
I'll move to read Bill eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of Bill eighteen eighty-two twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only, in ordinance of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, providing for the amendment of Chapter sixteen, elections, section sixteen dash five, procedures for filing for elective offices, fees of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, so as to update and modify the city's Code of Ordinances.
Move to accept Bill eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading.
Second.
All right. A motion's been made and seconded to accept Bill eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only. Any discussion on that, Bill? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I'll move to read Bill eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two on its fir-, second reading by title only.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of Bill eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only, in ordinance of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, providing for the amendment of Chapter sixteen, elections, section sixteen dash five, procedure for the filing for elective offices. Fees of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, so as to update and modify the city's Code of Ordinances.
I'll move to accept Bill eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading.
Second.
All right. A motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a good question?
Yes.
What's different between this and what we've been doing?
They, filing period starts earlier.
Filing period starts earlier?
Yeah, it starts earlier in June.
The interesting question is, if the state says that this is how we have to do our elections, why do we have to pass an ordinance about it?
We have to do that every year?
No, they just changed it. But they changed it last year or something. I remember.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Becker.
Because that's the way the state of Missouri works.
Exactly.
Right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Nope, you're good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Gennaro? Councilperson Becker?
Yes, sir.
Councilperson Picoella?
Yes.
Councilperson Massa? Bill number eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two now becomes ordinance eighteen eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? All right. Moving on to eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two, a contract with Cochran Engineering for engineering design and grant application services related to the Bailey Road resurfacing project, STT, STP grant.
Mayor, can I ask Jason to briefly characterize these next three ordinances?
You absolutely can.
The first ordinance is for the, an STP grant for Bailey Road, which we've put in, I think, twice now. Uh, so this is just the same application again. The applications are up, so he's gonna file again for Bailey Road.
Do we expect it to score better this time than it did last time?
He's, he's gonna reach out and see what he can do to get it to score better.
Okay.
So we're just applying for this, this won't go into effect unless we get the grant.
And, and it's been eight years since we got it, something like that?
Like that, yeah.
I think it's about right.
It's, it's pretty, Bailey Road's pretty bad.
Yeah.
Especially down in the business district.
And our fee to apply that didn't just carry over since we're, he's not charging us to apply for this one.
This is just for him to apply for. But if we do get it, the contract's already accepted, and they can keep on going down.
Okay.
Uh, the next ordinance is.
For the CDBG grants for sidewalks, right?
CDBG grant. So it'll be for the, um, same thing that we did this year. He, Dave, will be here on the nineteenth of December to do the public hearing for the whole thing we did last year. Should be a lot faster, because we, we already have the application, but he still has to have a public hearing. So that's for that, uh, grant. And then I believe the next one is for our paving project for next year. Paving project for next year, uh, which will be the map behind it. We're gonna keep going up on the streets that we've done, uh, the, the ADA grant, or sidewalk improvement. So next, so we went up into Tenth Street this year with the Ninth and Tenth, all the way over to Virginia, Jefferson and Virginia. So we'll, we'll pave all that next year, and then the, the grant for the ADA this year was kinda over Jefferson Burgess area that way. So then next year, after we do that, then we'll go to pave that, and we'll just keep following these ramps as long as we get these grants. Because that's, we're, we're almost guaranteed two hundred twenty-five thousand a year on, on these ADA grants.
Right.
So we'll just keep the pavement, until we run out or until we catch up, the pavement will just keep following those projects as long as you guys are okay with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think those three are for Cochran, and then the last one's different.
Yeah. Uh, I'll make a motion to read Bill eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first Bill eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two read by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only, in ordinance of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a contract with Cochran Engineering in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars for engineering design, grant application, bidding, and construction services related to the Bailey Road resurfacing project, STP grant. This project is dependent on grant approval, and if approved, will not take place until twenty twenty-five.
I'll move to accept Bill eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second to accept Bill eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I'll move to read Bill eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two on a second reading by title only.
Second.
Perfect. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of Bill eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two by title only?
Bill number eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only, in ordinance of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a contract with Cochran Engineering in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred, six hundred and nineteen dollars for engineering design, grant application, bidding, and construction services related to the Bailey Road resurfacing project, STP grant. This project is dependent on grant approval, and if approved, will not take place until twenty twenty-five.
Move to accept Bill eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I will poll the council. Mr. Bradley? Mr. Kemfer? Mr. Gennaro? Mr. Becker?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Picoella?
Yes.
Ms. Massa? All right. Bill number eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two now becomes ordinance eighteen eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll move to read Bill eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that, Bill? I think we've had it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of Bill eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only, in ordinance of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a contract with Cochran Engineering in the amount of forty-four thousand, five hundred and nine dollars for engineering design, grant application, bidding, and construction services related to the community development block grant program.
All right.
Move to accept.
Bill eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two. Second.
All right. Motion's been made, seconded to accept Bill eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only. Any discussion on that grant? It's the same one we talked about. Any opposed? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I'll move to read Bill eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two on its second reading by title only.
And I will second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of Bill eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only, in ordinance of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a contract with Cochran Engineering in the amount of forty-four thousand, five hundred and nine dollars for engineering design, grant application, bidding, and construction services related to the community development block grant program.
I'll move to accept Bill eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading.
I'll second.
All right. A motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by twenty, I'm sorry, by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I will poll the council. Councilperson Bradley?
Yes.
Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Gennaro? Councilperson Becker?
Yes.
Councilperson Picoella?
Yes.
Councilperson Massa? Bill number eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two now becomes ordinance eighteen eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. We're on to eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll move to read Bill eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only.
I will second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of Bill eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only, in ordinance of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a contract with Cochran Engineering in the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars for engineering design, bidding, and construction services related to the twenty twenty-three street overlay program.
Move to accept Bill eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only.
I will second.
All right. A motion's been made and seconded to accept Bill eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
I'll move to read Bill eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two on its second reading by title only.
I will second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. No discussion. Continuing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of Bill eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only, in ordinance of the City of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a contract with Cochran Engineering in the amount of thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars for engineering design, bidding, and construction services related to the twenty twenty-three street overlay program.
I'll move to accept Bill eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading.
I will second.
All right. A motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. I'll poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Gennaro? Councilperson Becker?
Yes.
Councilperson Picoella?
Yes.
Councilperson Massa? Bill number eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two now becomes ordinance eighteen eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right. That got our street ordinances out of the way. Our last one is going to be our salary study company one, so I will ask for that, so. I'll entertain a motion to read Bill eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I still think that's an issue.
Okay.
I, I guess I don't see why we can't do it ourselves. And the second part of it is, if they come back and, if, if we're paying the guys, for instance, twenty bucks an hour, and they come back and say, you should be paying thirty bucks an hour, do we have the money for that? And what are we gonna do?
Well, I can tell you, we don't have the money to jump up ten dollars an hour, but we would have a plan to get in place for our guys to move forward and say, hey, here's our plan, this is where you're at. The.
I don't think we can do that ourselves. Twenty grand.
It, to my understanding, Mr. Ozzy's, and, and we have the, the paperwork from FESS, from surrounding cities, but there's, there's more value in an outside source saying, hey, a, a non-biased source is what, is.
I don't know. Everything, you've got the entire state of Missouri, you can look at, see what everybody's making. Y'all can look at the same-sized communities, and pretty much be ducked the rentals that should have been making.
I, I think I agree with the mayor on this. I think having, having an outside professional evaluate all the different factors that go into it, like not just the, not just the size of the community, but also our physical position relative to where other people could work, if they live close enough to work here, where else could they drive to to go to work? We need to be competitive in the marketplace, and I think that it requires some expertise. If we had the expertise to do it in-house, I would say yes. But even if we had the expertise in-house to do it, if it's either the people up here, or the city's professional staff making those decisions, I think somebody's always gonna second-guess those decisions. Whereas if you got somebody that does this for a living, it's a little bit, those are numbers you can rely on pretty good. I've seen it work well in other places, at the community, or the county and several other communities around here. And, um, finally, the, we got, what, two bids on this? And, uh, I looked at both of them, and, uh, this one seemed to be the, A, cheaper, and B, they seem to have more expertise with the state of Missouri and the kinds of communities we would be comparing ourselves to. I don't know if the rest of you guys saw those or not, so. You agree with that?
Yes.
This is the one that FESS has used, correct?
Yes.
Like, we previously discussed.
I think, um, well, it's on the MML website for about thirty days.
Yeah.
I sent it personally to six or seven other corporations or companies and stuff, but I only had two response.
I mean.
At any point, I do want every year, and it's a real thing to.
It doesn't work.
It doesn't work.
It doesn't hold value, because they, they, and I agree with Jason on this, on, and I'm not always gonna agree with him, but I do on this, on the fact of, I looked at those numbers, and you can compare by your population, but then you have towns that have like a casino in them, so then you start comparing by revenue, and you get in over your head real quick when you're trying to be like, hey, what is this actual?
No, I agree with that.
Comparison, so I.
I'd hate to get into the spot where we don't have money to pay them.
And, and we might.
Wouldn't make me into that.
We might be in that spot, and then we just have to have a plan to say, hey, here's, here's where we're at.
With, with employees.
Right.
It's my thing.
No, that's, we value that. That's perfect.
And I always appreciate your opinion, but I think this is a good idea for us.
What, what are we working with in terms of job classifications and job descriptions? I mean, how, how old is that?
So I have asked everybody to update, every department had to update their job descriptions in their departments, so they're doing that. So we won't have to re- if we don't hear that part, we can all just keep going. So they're gonna have updated job descriptions, so they'll review each of those job.
So they're gonna have updated job descriptions, so they'll review each of those job descriptions with the department head, myself.
Okay. Do we even have, do we even have a job description for you?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's still online.
It's posted online. He's actually one of the easy ones to find.
Well, I know, cause that was-
It's not quite all I do, it needs to be quite as much, but, yeah, it might be a lot. And I think, um, whenever, yeah, we're updating those, we speak, so they can review them. So there's, we have about sixty positions, full-time positions, but you figure about half those, cause some of them, you know, they're closely close, so that's only one position, um, same as the street.
At the same level, yeah.
How many positions do you leave in one number? Um, is that you want to call it? Um, well, it depends, um, I'm thinking about half, about thirty or thirty-five, because even though there's, let's just say, twelve road officers, and there's D one, but I'm also having them kinda work through, right now, we just have, you know, you have worker one and worker two. I want a skilled worker and a semi-skilled worker in the labor position. Because there's now the, the same guy that, um, you know, like, in better terms, you know, sweeps the shop, is making the same amount as the guy that comes out here and runs their, bringing his kids here every day. So that's, you know, that's not really right, in their opinion and mine. So we're gonna try to start differentiating where each department will have somewhat of a skilled laborer, semi-skilled and a laborer. So there could be more classifications coming in.
Jason, I guess I should've asked you this before, but, uh, does that include, um, that'll include obviously all the union positions, too? Will that have to result in any renegotiation of any contracts or anything like that?
Yeah, we negotiate their contracts every year anyway.
Okay. Okay.
Alright. Um-
Where were we on that?
Uh, I need a, a motion.
Need a motion to read by title only.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll move to read Bill eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only.
I'll second.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. We had our discussion on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, I don't.
Alright.
After all that, you're not gonna oppose?
Okay. Hearing none, motion carries. Right, Madam Clerk, can I have the first reading of Bill eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a contract with the Austin Peters Group for a salary and compensation study for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand, five hundred and forty dollars.
Thank you.
I'll move to accept Bill eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading.
I'll second.
Alright, a motion's been made and seconded to accept Bill eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two on its first reading by title only. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For the second reading, okay.
No, for the passage.
For the passage.
Okay, sorry, you're correct. Alright, all those in favor say aye. We got that. Any opposed? Mr. Bradley? Madam Clerk, can I have the reading and the second and final reading Bill of eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two by title only?
Posted my motion for that, aren't I?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Uh, I'll move to read Bill eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only.
I'll second.
Sorry, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, can I have the second and final reading of Bill eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two by title only, please?
Bill number eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only. In ordinance of the city of Crystal City, Missouri, authorizing the mayor, Mike Osher, to enter into a contract with the Austin Peters Group for a salary and compensation study for an amount not to exceed twenty thousand, five hundred and forty dollars.
I'll move to accept Bill eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading.
And I will second.
Alright, a motion's been made and seconded to approve Bill eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two on its second and final reading by title only. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing Mr. Bradley, I will poll the council. Councilperson Bradley? Councilperson Kemfer? Councilperson Ginever? Councilperson Becker?
Yes.
Councilperson Fisher? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilperson Massa?
Yes.
Councilperson Picarella?
Yes.
Alright. Bill number eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two now becomes ordinance eighteen eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Alright. City administrators report, you guys have Jason's report. You guys have any questions on that? Take time, I mean, it's link, and it's front and back. Be sure to look, it says last one of the year.
Um, well, I can bring this up and around here.
Okay. You guys have any questions on that? Can we read through it? Alright.
I don't remember anything about the, well, culvers, is what they do, that's what they manage a lot of, and old fuel station or something? Yeah, that's all been done. That's all done? Yeah, they're, they're coming, they're, they've done all the, uh, environmental, they're, they're done, they've done all the environmental.
Good deal. Alright, mayor's report. Uh, park winding down, we got a park event coming up December ninth and tenth. Uh, park, there gonna be a tree lighting, and then kids with Santa, things of that nature, kid, they can take pictures on their phones, things like that. So we have that event going in the park. Um, parade, our Twin City Parade is this Monday, so I believe that starts at seven, correct? Alright, so we'll be in that, and, uh, the city's been doing a great job, I think. Uh, last week, we had a busy week, and, uh, my fundamental thing is city government should make our lives better as citizens. And, uh, last week, a lot of stuff came together, and I thought we did a, a great job on that, so. Alright, we'll go to roundtable. Ms. Massa? Mr. Picarella? Mr. Becker?
Uh, this might be premature, and I, we can, we don't have to do it right away, of course, but I would like to bring this up, so we can all be thinking about it and looking into the, uh, mechanics of what might need to be done, uh, to change the name of Airport Road to, for instance, Redbird Lane, or something like that. Um-
I like that. I know we removed some signs and stuff from the city, you know, getting-
Yeah.
-rid of the, the airport signs. But I like that idea.
But that, uh, that name has served its time, time for a new one, I think.
I like that.
Yep.
But that seems pretty easy, cause we can make-
I was gonna say, that sounds like a Dan Turner job.
That sounds real quick. I think we, we gotta make- I, I think we get to vote, but-
I think, uh, talking to the post office and talking to the people who will have to reprint any of their materials is probably what we ought to do first.
Yeah, there'll be, there's actually quite a bit to it, I think. Yeah, there really is. Well, thank you, Mr. Becker, that's a good point. Mr. Ginever?
Um, so we're supposed to have a joint meeting this, that's, in December, is that what I, there's an email about that?
Okay, but it's a closed meeting. Okay, and it's what, December fourth, fourth?
Fifth, it's a Monday.
Okay.
Yeah, but it'll be a closed session. It just came out early today.
And, uh, in, in case somebody else didn't see this either, I sent out an email asking about the marijuana sales tax. And, uh, uh, Jason, you responded and said, "We don't have any dispensaries in the city anyway," right?
I believe Mr. Becker responded as well, and, uh, it's, the, they're not issuing any more licenses as of right, until-
Five hundred and eighty-five days, so a year and a half.
Okay, so-
So if, if we get one, we can put it before the voters, they have a three percent of town. But I don't know if we should do that, that we have one.
That's probably a good idea.
Prematurely.
Now, that's a state, we don't get anything back from the state on that? Now it's a, a state deal?
I thought it was subject to normal sales tax, anyway.
But we have the authority to put a three percent, put it to the voters.
An additional three percent.
Three percent.
Right.
So, you know, most, there's a lot of deep stuff going around on my list, but most communities are gonna do that, if they have one. If they don't-
Mm-hmm, sure, right.
Yeah, it makes sense to wait on that.
Okay.
I think.
Okay, that's all I have.
That's fine. Mr. Kemfer? Mr. Bradley?
No, sir.
Alright. That's pretty much it. I'll entertain- Hey, we didn't do bad. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Hey, thank you, guys, and have a good Thanksgiving. I should've mentioned that in my mayor's report, but have a good time with your holiday, your family during the holiday season.
Anybody else watching the World Cup? Not, not even on your phone? A little bit? Um, I didn't see the end of the US game, but, uh, I think, um- The one I, the one I actually got a chance to see the most of was, uh, the, uh-
Yeah, with their guys in mode on the highway, that's, yeah.
Oh, you should, it was-
Man-